School Board Meeting is now called to order. Board members, who are all present, to begin what we have in front of us. You've all had an opportunity to review the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Luckin is moved and Dr. Harrison is seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any names, they're being noted, the motion is approved. Next on the agenda is the approving of the minutes. Board members who've had an opportunity to review the minutes in advance, is there a motion to approve the minutes for July 21st, 2020, August 4th, 2020? That's a report meeting on August 7th, 2020.
If we approve the minutes as written?
Is there a second?
Second.
I see that it's moved, that Dr. Luckin has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
They're being noted, the motion is approved. Have a superintendent for.
Greetings, Board members, to the JPS administrators, our staff, our parents, community members, all of those who are joining us via teleconference this evening. At first, we'll, we'll begin with a video presentation with the latest district news and important updates from our instructional television production team. And as they begin, I'm going to mute my everything.
Grade levels have begun virtual learning at home. Instructional content is being delivered to scholars via online learning management systems, Google Classroom for elementary scholars, and Canvas for middle and high school scholars. Learning management systems make it possible for teachers to centralize learning resources and create lessons as well as communicate with parents. The online tools teachers and students use regularly can be easily accessed within the system. Additionally, parents can receive notifications about assignments and grades from either platform. Virtual instruction for all JPS scholars will continue for the first semester of the 2020-2021 school year. For families with no internet access or device at home, the district will provide those homes with optional resources such as printed materials, videos, and daily support from a dedicated team of educators. The Office of Child Nutrition and the JPS Transportation Department have partnered to expand meal programs for virtual learners. The partnership increases the food service program to include more pickup locations. Child Nutrition On The Go kicked off on the first day of school. Breakfast and lunch meals were provided at 13 school sites and at neighborhood bus stops. The program will continue throughout the virtual learning period. Families can pick up meals at school sites from 11:00 a.m. until 3:00 p.m. each school day. Please visit our website for more information about pickup times and locations. After thoughtful and careful consideration for the overall well-being of JPS scholars and staff, the district will cancel all sports and co-curricular activities in Jackson Public Schools for the fall semester. This decision was made in response to the rise in COVID-19 cases in the Jackson area. Please visit our website and read more about these cancellations and the alternative measures JPS plans to offer this fall. The South Jackson Homeowners Association is serving JPS scholars in the South Jackson area. Association members don't.
Seem to have a bit of technical challenge. We have the ending of the video. I also have it queued on YouTube, so just allow me a few seconds to queue that up and we'll proceed from where we locked off.
Jackson Homeowners Association is serving JPS scholars in the South Jackson area. Association members donated 1,000 backpacks to scholars who attend South Jackson area schools. The backpacks are stuffed with school supplies, hand sanitizer, and face masks. Association members will distribute the backpacks to elementary, middle, and high schools. The district is grateful for the donation. For more information about Jackson Public Schools, please visit our website. Follow us on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube.
Okay, as always, we want to thank the team for keeping us up to date and thank everyone for your continued patience as we worked through our, some of our tech issues. So as everyone knows, as everyone knows, yesterday was the start of our new 2021 school year and I think we were all excited just to get started. There's been so much conversation and consternation about the start of school and the program and all of that. So we definitely wanted to give a shout out to all of our scholars and our, our teachers and other staff members, to the parents and community members, all of those who lent a hand to help us to get the, the school year off with a bang. We want to provide just a, just a quick window into our first day of school here in Jackson Public Schools. So we have just a few quick photos of our team members and parents and scholars from day one. Also, because sometimes it's, it just helps to hear individual stories, I have just a couple of, of quick anecdotes from yesterday and both having to do mainly with the technology, coincidentally. So the first one, in the first situation, we have a parent from Isabel Elementary School who brought their JPS-issued laptop back to the school to get a packet, an instructional packet instead. And the parent was struggling and a bit frustrated with the steps for logging on to the Google Classroom and maneuvering through the district instruction, through the direct instruction that was happening on the virtual platform. The staff at Isabel invited the parent into the school, showed them how to log on to Google Classroom. They worked with that parent and, and were able to kind of calm them down and support them a bit. And the parent left feeling much, much better and willing to hang in there with the virtual instruction. So we were very pleased to hear that, that report. Another parent was also frustrated with the, with the, the technology and the virtual model. But they were frustrated for a somewhat different reason. They have children with exceptional needs. And so they too wanted to move away from the virtual platform, virtual model, for the packets, the instructional packet. The teachers were able to speak with the parent to explain that their scholars would receive additional support through the student-to-teacher interactions and the accommodations and modifications that would be provided to their, their, to their child. The parent eventually, after understanding kind of what was planned and how they would, how the teachers and staff would support that scholar, the parent eventually agreed that that was the better mode of instruction for them and agreed to take the computer back home and to continue with the virtual instruction. So in two cases, we had families who were a bit frustrated on day one and wanted to opt for the packets. But our team was able to work with them to help them overcome some of the initial concerns, but also to better explain what the instruction would look like for their scholars and, and help them to kind of hang in there with us. All of that to say, parents and to our teachers and scholars, this is, again, we've said this over and over. This is uncharted water for us and for, for all of the districts that are going through this situation right now. And even those who might have been one-to-one and were using virtual instruction previously, they're not doing it. They hadn't been doing it in the age of COVID and, and this huge health pandemic and, and all the concerns there. So we definitely want to encourage everyone to hang in there with us. If you have specific questions or challenges, or if there's something that is not quite clicking for you and you need some support, please do reach out to our school staff. They're, they're anxious to support you. They're looking forward to support you. And so we want to get all of our scholars logged on and working with us virtually, all of those who can, and, and know that, that we will be learning together and overcoming challenges together over time. So I want to thank all the staff members who've been doing such wonderful work to prepare and to launch the school year. Excited for reports from day two and, and through the rest of the week because we know that, again, together we'll be able to do some pretty amazing things together. At this time, I want to move to just a little bit of conversation around the fall athletics. As you heard in, as you've heard previously and as you heard again in the, the highlights reel that we played, after quite a bit of review of data, as after quite a bit of discussion as to what we might be able to do and how we can keep our scholars and coaches and families as safe as possible, we, we have made the decision to not to run our athletics for the fall semester. However, we've thought quite a bit about and have, have some pretty strong plans actually about the things that we will do and that we will be able to offer to families. So while many districts around the nation are grappling with that decision to take, whether to take part in the fall sports and, and yeah, our JPS Athletic Department and I, we made the tough decision to cancel for the fall. At this time, I'm going to invite Daryl Jones, who's our Executive Director of Athletics for Jackson Public Schools, to join us and to outline what we are doing to support our scholars at this time. Mr. Jones?
Good evening, School Board, Superintendent Green, scholars, parents, and all that are on the Zoom call this evening. As Dr. Green mentioned, that we're excited about the things that we have planned for our scholar athletes to support them in the cancellation of our fall sports. We are very empathetic and we understand as a former football coach, there's nothing more important this time of the year, nothing more exciting this time of the year than, than football and all the activities that go along with it, band and so on. So it does break our heart as well to not be able to participate. However, for our football, volleyball, cross-country, swim, band, and cheerleading, we are making some other plans in order to do the best we can to give them some semblance of a season this year. And so what we are doing for each, each sport mentioned, we are, the district is contracting with a strength and conditioning coach who will come in and, and work with all of our athletes on strength and condition, conditioning, particularly our senior athletes. We don't want them to lose opportunities for college scholarships and, and things of that nature. So we will bring that person in who's going to work with them one-on-one and in small group settings in order to bear their skills so they will have that opportunity to go on to play college football or volleyball or whatever they choose in their particular sport. We also, we hosting a, a combine or a showcase for our student athletes, especially our football players in December because that's, that's the time where the college coaches can actually come to campus to view their, view potential prospects. So everything will be leading up to that. In the meantime, we'll be working on drill work individually with those scholar athletes, preparing them for that showcase in December. And it is, it's important to us that we understand the coaches, all of our coaches are really going to be working hard with our student athletes and preparing them for the following season. And we're going to do everything that we can do to support our scholar athletes, especially our seniors as they vie to go to college. Also for our cheerleaders, we will be hiring a, a cheer coach who can work with them in small groups on tumbling and, and stunts and things of that nature. So those young ladies will be receiving support from a contracted person as well. So as you can see, we have, we are looking into providing some possible avenues for our young scholars to continue to build on their technique. And our band, our band continues to do positive things. They have college people coming in to host auditions and that's something that they're already doing. So they're just going to continue to do that and also provide small, small group music lessons for our, for our young scholars. So in, in, in closing, we are doing everything humanly possible to support our, our young, our young people. We believe in them and we're not going to just cancel the season and not consider their, 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 their futures and not consider where they are right now. So at this time, Dr. Green, if there's anybody had any questions or if not, we're back to you.
Let me see if any board members have any questions. The, the question was whether we have a timetable for making a decision about winter sports. We don't have an exact deadline for making the decision. We will obviously spend a good bit of time this, this through the fall, again, watching our, and consulting, analyzing the, the data on regarding the COVID cases as well as continuing to learn about ways that we might be able to support those in both the winter and, and spring sports activities. I, I want to underscore that anything, any of the activities that we can provide virtually, we'll absolutely provide those. So even if it's not the, the typical competition experience, we do want to make sure that we're continuing with conditioning, continuing with supporting on skill building, but also ensuring that our young people have access to colleges and potential recruiters and, and all of that. I suspect that we'll learn a bit this year about how to keep our, our scholars in front of potential recruiters and learn to, to really build on some of our general practices with regard to that as well. So what we will, we'll be sure though to communicate a deadline by which we'll make the decision for, for the spring, for winter and spring just so that folks can plan accordingly. If at all possible, we'll be looking for ways though to, to get our young people active and, and participating. Yes, sir. Board members, are there any other questions for Mr. Jones? Mr. Jones, thank you so much for, for that presentation and, and just for all of the work that you and, and our, our coaches and, and all of those working with young people, all the work that y'all are doing just to make sure that we remain safe and that we still have the meaningful experiences.
Yes, sir.
So now, more than, than ever, our families need to have technology. They need to be connected. They need to have stable connectivity in their homes. And that's obviously as we move into this virtual setting for instruction, but as well as our families are, are looking for resources around employment and, and other, other things. And more and more, we're hearing about and being encouraged to, to tap into telehealth and, and those resources and that. I want to share now a bit of information that, about a really exciting project that we're working on with the city. And, and so I want to share just a little bit or an overview of this now and we'll be talking more about it as, as the plans come to life. So Jackson Public Schools is entering into a partnership with, with the Jackson, I'm sorry, the city of Jackson. And in that partnership, we're building on connectivity. There's a, a master plan, I would say, on the part of the city to expand broadband out to, there's a term that they use that's escaping me now, but out to homes and businesses, out to all homes and businesses so that they'll have access directly to broadband connectivity. This would be a game changer for our city, for our residents, for our businesses, it's just across the board, organizations across the board. That's, that plan that they're working on is several years, will take several years to implement. And understanding that in the meantime, we've got our scholars and others who need connectivity, we've engaged with the city and with some of the nonprofits and for-profit partners to help us to understand connectivity possibilities within the city, to help us to identify the areas around the city and within Jackson Public Schools in particular where, where we're least connected, it seems that we're least connected by some of the data that we have, and to start to create a network of service, a wireless service to those students and those scholars and their families. And so through this partnership, again, we're tapping into the city's plan around broadband internet connectivity and building out a wireless mesh that would support nearer term, shorter term connectivity for scholars and families. This is again based on this comprehensive review of connectivity and we've identified two high priority areas that we're looking to blanket the entire city with wireless connectivity, but we've identified two areas of high priority that we would get connected first through this wireless network. And those would be in West Jackson and South Jackson. And again, that's just for the initial planning and implementation efforts. We're looking to build again on the city's current broadband wiring and expanding that out. And this would include some towers that would be outfitted with wireless devices to, to send signals out across those areas, across again, South and West Jackson. And this is something that will continue to build, the planning or timing for this will continue to build over the, the next few months. What I'll share with you now are just a couple of, of maps of the areas. It's not the easiest to see, but again, just to give you an idea of the, of the area. So the area west of I-20, I-220 and north of I-20, that's the air, general West Jackson area that would be covered. I'll give you just a second if you can see that. And then in South Jackson, you can move on to the next. And then in South Jackson, the area that borders Forest Hill, McClure, and Cywell Roads. So you can kind of barely see the yellow somewhat zigzagging line, Forest Hill, McClure, and, and Cywell Roads. So again, just to give you an idea of the areas that we're talking about, as we looked at the, the homes of scholars, the addresses that we have of scholars in, throughout Jackson Public Schools, dense populations and where there's connectivity and where there isn't great connectivity, we're able to identify those two areas to, to target first. In terms of next steps, the, the partners that we're working with will continue their engineering design through August and September. We'll have a, a strong proposal that we'll be able to bring to you, board members, with more of the specifics of cost and the agreements that would be associated with this, this endeavor in partnership with the city and with others. The contracts and procurement phase with, based on your approval, of course, would, would move through October and November and construction phase in December through March. But we would start to see sites coming on, coming live in January and, and through March. The last thing I'll say about this is there are lots of moving pieces. There, there's tons of opportunity here. And while this is not the long-term solution, this is a really strong, shorter-term solution. As you'll recall, board members, we, we've endeavored to identify hotspots to help with connectivity in the, in the, filling some urgent needs where folks just simply are not connected. And obviously, as we, as we move forward, the hotspots are not the best solution. It's, it's helpful for now, but it's not the best solution as we think about our own homes and connectivity and that. And so we're excited to, to be working on this, this project with the city. We're learning a lot about connectivity and, and where there are needs and where there are opportunities. We expect that we'll continue to blanket the city as we move beyond the South and West sections of the city just to make sure that where there are needs, that we can help to fulfill those needs. And I believe I'll stop there and see if there are any questions about this. Yes, ma'am. Yeah, so one of the things.
Repeat her question for those of us that weren't able to hear it.
Sure. The question was, have we thought about post-COVID? How the connectivity, this wireless connectivity might be utilized or how it might benefit the, the district? As we, as we discussed and shared when we talked about the, the calendar, the revised calendar for, for the district, to this point, any snow days, inclement weather days, if we, heaven forbid, should have a burst pipe, burst pipes and that sort of thing, or frozen pipes or those kinds of issues, anything that might close the school district down and not allow us to come out and, and educate our scholars and work within the school building, this provides us an, an opportunity to support learning online. As we've endeavored to provide devices and will continue to get devices into every scholar's hands, that plus this connectivity just really supports our efforts to, to be able to continue instruction. Even while we're in school, we're endeavoring to build what we call a hybrid or a blended model so that the instruction, even, even as we look forward to bringing our scholars back into the schoolhouse, we can continue with the, the, the work that they do in school and the work that they can do from home based on that connectivity and with that device. So for sure that. As I said, the, the broadband, that proposition is, you know, some years out. That's, that's going to take quite a bit of wiring and, and maneuvering and, and, and more planning on the part of the, of the city. As we're working towards that end, we wanted to make sure that, that we continue to provide, again, far beyond the pandemic, which, you know, hopefully, prayerfully, we're, we're beyond that in, in another, some number of months. As we continue on, we want to make sure that there's a stable solution for connectivity for our families. And unfortunately, the hotspots, that's, that's just not something that we can, it's not a long-term solution. So those are some of the, the things that, that we've been thinking most about. And, and I'll just stress, you know, one of the, one of the keys in this planning has been creating something that wouldn't then be thrown away once the city gets the broadband connectivity going. We wanted to make sure that what we build through this wireless setup, that it can be easily shifted into the broader broadband connectivity plan. Sure.
Is the, is the process that you outlined, are those costly? Are they covered by Jackson Public Schools or is that by the city?
So there's, the, the question was, the process that we've outlined, would the cost be covered by Jackson Public Schools or by the city? There are pieces of the plan and, and one of the things that, that will be delivered to us later this month, early next month, is the, the kind of the cost sharing or the, the proposal around costs. We expect that, that we will bear some bit of the, quite a bit of the cost because the plan that we're implementing now is a JPS plan, right? It's, it, this whole. implementing now is a JPS plan, right? It's this whole wireless piece is not something that the city was endeavoring. They were working towards the longer plan, and we impressed upon them the need for a sooner option. And so we're, but we're excited, though, to be able to utilize some of our COVID cares dollars to support the this plan. Sure. Any other questions, board members, with regard to this wireless wireless plan? All right. Well, I thank you for your attention this this evening. As I said, we're excited to be back in school, excited to have eyes on, now we can't hug them, we're not with them, but excited to have our eyes on our scholars and to continue to work with families to to move into this, what we'll call this new normal, at least for right now, in terms of our instructional program. With that, thank you, President Johnson, members of the board, and that concludes my announcements and remarks.
Thank you, Dr. Green. After the first day of school for our household, it was quite exciting. It was like a normal first day. It is somewhat normal. Do we have any participants for public comment? We have no participants for public comment, and so now we're moving on to the information items only. Board member report. Dr. Green, can you hear me?
We can, but you sound a little distant. So if we could have you project just a little bit more, that would be great for those that are on on the line.
Okay.
We'll try to shift Dr. Green's screen a little closer to you and hopefully carry in some of that sound.
Now, information items only. Board member report. So I think we have one, I know that we have Dr. Sebeck as a report.
Yeah. So I will just provide a quick update from the Finance Committee. Tomorrow, the Jackson Public School District will be going before City Council to make our budget presentation. This is part of the annual budget request process. So again, that will be tomorrow, and Dr. Green and Ms. Miller will be leading that charge. Ms. Johnson and I will also aim to be there as well. So that is, that is the main work up from the Finance Committee. We will be getting together over the next week or so, just to begin doing, there are some decisions we need to make and start talking through, just looking at our long-term debt as well. So those will be coming up. We still don't have numbers yet for the Mississippi Adequate Education Program. Ms. Miller and her team are keeping eyes on that. We also have not received our federal COVID dollars, COVID cares dollars. And again, you've heard how we've used that money. Again, that is on a reimbursement basis. So we, we are eagerly awaiting the arrival of those dollars. So those are, those are the primary items that the Finance Committee will be working on over the next couple of weeks, and also just major finance issues, opportunities that we'll be working on as well. Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, Dr. Sebeck. Board members, do you have any questions? Not hearing any. Ms. Marshall Thomas.
Yes. So this is the recommendation for a revision to the early release policy. The early release is available for any 12th grade student, provided they meet the early release criteria. So two parts to that. The first thing is that for the 2020, 2021 school year, that 12th grade students be scheduled to take only those courses that are needed to meet graduation requirements with parental approval, and then also provide they meet the early release criteria. The early release criteria is that students have met the college and career readiness benchmark standards, which has an ACT sub-score of 17 in English and a 19 in math, or they've earned silver level on ACT work keys. If the student does not meet those, those requirements, those sub-score requirements, they can meet early release requirements by having passed all of their state assessments, be on track to meet graduation requirements, have a 2.5 GPA, and then also be enrolled in Essentials to College Math or Essentials to College Literacy. And the reason that the state has added the Essentials to College Literacy and Essentials to College Math courses is because students that don't have the 17 in English and/or the 19 in math, this, these two courses allow them not to be exempt from taking remedial courses once they enter college. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Marshall Thomas. If you have questions, we'll move on to Mr. Rowe.
Ms. Johnson, I think I'm, I'm sorry, I think I'm going to take this one from Mr. Rowe. The administration is presenting for review the Jackson Heart Foundation's Child Nutrition Combi Oven Grant to purchase Combi ovens and to also establish a no-fry policy at Baker, Lake, McLeod, and Sykes. Board members, this has come before you several times. We've been recipient of this grant over the last several years. We have a total of 38 schools that currently have a Combi oven. And you know, as soon as the Combi oven goes in, we have a no-fry policy. So 38 schools are the recipients of these Combi ovens, and 15 of those 38 have been the recipient of these grants. So this item is being presented for your information for tonight, for approval of the grant to get the additional Combi ovens at those locations, and also to establish a no-fry policy at those sites as well.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Board members, are there any questions or comments?
Is that going to be? All right. Board members, are there any questions? There being no questions, again, Ms. Marshall Thomas.
Okay. The administration is presenting for information, the Online and Blended Learning Memorandum of Understanding Between Edgenuity and the Jackson Public School District, for the purposes of providing online and blended learning courses through credit recovery, initial credit, and also instructional services, which provides a virtual instructor that is state licensed and qualified to teach in the state of Mississippi for those courses that we may not have a certified teacher.
Thank you. Board members, are there any questions? Thank you, Ms. Marshall Thomas.
Thank you.
Dr. Smith, items E and F.
Good evening to President Johnson, other school board members, Superintendent Green, JPS staff in our community. The Office of Teaching and Learning is presenting for information only the contractual agreement between Parents for Public Schools and Jackson Public Schools for the Ask for More Arts Program for the 2021 school year. Also, this program allows art education, focusing on providing visual and performative arts instruction. By integrating arts in the schools, participating students are afforded opportunities that many students in the inner-city urban school districts are not given, and the program will be virtual. For F, we're presenting for information only the contractual agreement between the Mississippi Symphony Orchestra and Jackson Public Schools. Again, this program is providing supplemental music instruction, and the information has been altered to allow virtual participation.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Board members, are there any questions or comments? There being none, we will move on to information action items. Dr. Smith, A and B.
All right. Again, the administration is recommending approval of our Soul Source Declaration to purchase wit and wisdom resources. This is a resource that's published by great minds, and they are the only publisher that provides this resource in order to effectively implement the wit and wisdom curriculum. And we're also recommending for information action for the Soul Source Declaration to purchase Ready Math consumable workbooks. They are the only provider or publisher that provides this resource in order to effectively implement the Ready Math curriculum.
Thank you. Do you want to go ahead and take B as well?
I did. I did a both together. I did a ready math first and then wit and wisdom.
Thank you. Board members, are there any questions?
Oh, I just want to second if this is a good idea. I move that we accept information action items, items A and B.
One question.
One question. Dr. Smith, could you please share the plans for getting this information out to students in a virtual environment?
The, the distribution plan that we've had for devices, as well as pick, pack, and pickup, well, we will follow the same distribution plan for consumable items as well.
Okay.
And that could be parent pickup or bus transportation.
Dr. Harrison, were you about to give us a motion?
Yes, thank you. I move that information action items A and B have been approved.
Second.
Dr. Harrison has moved. Ms. Hilliard has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. Next, we have Mr. Hollins. Dr. Hollins, D and E.
I'll present this item instead. So at this point, the District of the Administration is recommending the approval for district-to-district transfers, so incoming students to the district, and approval of district-to-district transfer outgoing students, those that requests that have been received and processed.
Thank you, Dr. Cormac. Board members, are there any questions or comments? If not, is there a motion?
I don't, A, C, and D, district-to-district transfer incoming and outgoing.
Dr. Luckett has moved. Is there a second?
A second.
Ms. Hilliard has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. Thank you. Next, board members, we have the Consent Agenda Items Finance. All of the Consent Agenda Items Finance have been reviewed by the board previously. We've had an opportunity to ask questions of the administration. Are there any other questions? If not, is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda Finance? Dr. Sebeck has moved.
Second.
Dr. Harrison has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. Next, we have the Consent Agenda Item General. All of these items have been reviewed by the board previously. We've had an opportunity to ask questions of the administration. Are there any other questions? If not, is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda General?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Hilliard has moved. Dr. Mr. Figurs has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There being none, the motion is approved. Next, board members, we have the Consent Agenda Items Personnel. Again, we've had an opportunity to review these previously. Are there any questions? If not, is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Dr. Harrison has moved. Ms. Hilliard has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. Next, board members, is there a consideration to hold an executive session?
And there is District Council's office has two matters to bring before you.
Thank you, Attorney Turner. Is there a motion to to close the meeting to consider executive session?
So moved.
Dr. Luckett has moved. Mr. Figurs has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? There being none, this meeting is closed. Thank you. We're back into, in the meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn if we promise that we're going to get this sound fixed.
Yes, ma'am.
I wonder what's happening.
I think we have a candidate for all the computers and the, all the noise that each computer is making and bothering. It'll be fixed.
We did all right, though. You handled it very well.
Thank you. Thank you. But we got through our first meeting, and we're here. So teachers are back in buildings, and some of our board members are back in the boardroom.
In the boardroom. Thank you all, strong souls who are-
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Figurs has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? There being none, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you-